We still have two minutes before we're allowed to start. We can start late, but we cannot start early. So there'll be two more minutes and then we'll start. All right, we'd like to welcome you and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is June 27th, 2023, and we are beginning at 6:30 PM in the City Council chambers of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. We have Councilman Fitzie Umanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Norfelt, and myself. And then we're joined at the dais with our Assistant City Manager Nicole Cottle. And then we're joined online with our city recorder Nicole Kamik. We'll now have our opening ceremony and we'll turn the time over to Councilman Whitstone for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a few minutes before we recite the Pledge of Allegiance and some of you may have noticed a couple of fighter jets and a refueling tanker flying around earlier today. And I currently serve in the 151st Air Refueling Wing part-time. And I take a lot of pride in that, in the KC-135 aircraft, which is the aircraft that I work on and I do maintenance on when I'm doing my guard duties. And this day, June 27th, 1923, in San Diego, California, the first aerial refueling took place. And back then, it was the aircraft had two wings and the copilot would would climb out of the cockpit and climb out onto the wing and lower down a hose to the other aircraft to transfer fuel. And that was the first first time we've ever transferred fuel from one aircraft to another. And since then, we do things a lot differently, but the KC-135 that we use in all of our contingencies around the world is over 60 years old. And the maintainers that I work with help keep those big aircraft flying and safe for pilots to transfer fuel to our bombers and our fighter aircraft. And so I just wanted to take a just a moment and recognize the great work that our service members do in keeping these old aircraft in the air and keeping our nation safe. And with that, would you please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
Hey, thank you, Councilman Whitstone. We will now recognize we have Representative Judy Weeks Roner with us, and thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, we'll now move on to our minutes of June 20th, 2023, and I'll turn them to the council for discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I'd move to approve those minutes. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And they'll stand approved. Thank you. Okay, we'll now go to our awards and ceremony and proclamations. And we have a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Christensen. It is recognition of the month of July for the Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation recognizing the month of July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including West Valley City. And Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And Parks and Recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's disease. And Parks and Recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecology, ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas West Valley City recognizes the benefits of Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, do hereby proclaim and recognize July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month. And I might say a big thank you to all of our Parks and Recreation staff who handle, I forget how many parks within the city limits, plus all of the city grounds and other areas. They do a great job and we'd like to recognize them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will now accept public comment. Public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to 30 minutes, to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up with your name and address, please give it to us then. Otherwise, just give us your name at the mic. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the council during the comment period shall be allowed to speak more than once. And speakers should not expect a debate with the mayor, staff, or council. The mayor, the council, and the staff will have time to respond within the 30 minutes. And speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or members of the city council. So we'll turn to our signup sheet and we'll go to Speaker One. Oh, and I will ask if somebody says something you agree with or that you were going to say, if you would just maybe raise your hand in support and not everybody get up and repeat the exact same thing. Just new information. We have more people signed up than we have time for, so we will start now.
Mayor, my name is Stephen Nielsen and I'm a resident of West Valley City. I'm here to address the council regarding the 4100 South and Bangator interchange proposed by UDOT. My wife, son, and I moved into this neighborhood a year ago because after looking at nearly a dozen properties across the valley, this neighborhood was the most welcoming. You can be outside and in less than five minutes, someone will be stopping to say hello. When you walk around the neighborhood, everybody waves. There was an instant sense of community. We felt safe here from day one. We felt that this was a place we could raise our family. We knew the Bangator Expansion Project was moving north and would affect this area, but with an interchange already planned a mile south, 4700 South, and only a mile north, there's 35th, which would inevitably get an interchange. Logically, we assumed 41st would end up only being an overpass. Across the entire valley, 41st and 39th never connects with I-15 or I-215 until you get to Wasatch Boulevard. And even there, it is only a half interchange. Additionally, this intersection is predominantly residential, unlike every other intersection that has been upgraded. UDOT wouldn't be so foolish as to propose an interchange that would wipe out these neighborhoods. But a month ago, that's just what UDOT presented to us. Our neighborhood, our community, was outraged. We immediately started a letter-writing campaign and petition drive. We knocked on every door in the area, handed out dozens of packets instructing people on how to write letters to have their voices heard, and collected over 200 signatures of residents who are unhappy that this interchange is being proposed. In several conversations that I've had with UDOT at public meetings, I've been told repeatedly that UDOT is open to change. That it's West Valley who wants the interchange. That if West Valley City changed their position, that if the city asked UDOT not to build a full interchange of 4100 South, but rather just an overpass, UDOT would seriously consider changing their proposal. So that's what I'm here to ask for, that you reconsider your position on having an interchange of 4100 South. We understand that Bangator has to become a freeway. We know that not every home can be saved. But there has to be an element of compassion for what people have built in this area over decades. Rather than only looking at the cold analytics of how many cars can be moved north, south, east, and west every minute. According to UDOT, eliminating the proposed interchange of 4100 South would only add two to five minutes of additional travel time during peak hours at 47th and 35th in 2050. So I ask you, is the destruction of approximately 54 homes worth shaving two to five minutes off someone's evening commute? Is ripping apart the fabric of community worth having one extra interchange? I know the answer to that, and I think all of you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Two. Yeah, no clapping. Just raise your hand if you support him. I'll ask that after everyone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here for the same reason. I want to support this community. I appreciate the fact that you've been to these meetings and listened to the people and some of the other city council people have too. I am grateful that you care about our community. But I'm asking that this city council get together and form a joint resolution with this community and see what we can do to build a relationship with UDOT and find better solutions. I don't know if you realize that we have tunnels that are a safety concern. And people in our community will be using those tunnels, not necessarily just the people in this room. I'm asking that if you would, please think about doing a joint resolution with this community and see what we can do about improving the lives of all West Valley citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody in support? Okay, thank you. So Speaker Three.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Rob Johnson. I am a resident of West Valley, definitely. Been, since it's been inception, I've been here all my life in Granger. But also speaking on Bangator and 41st South, as this directly affects me and my family. Because I just live right off of it, essentially. The drawings that are out there do show homes wouldn't have to be demolished. It appears that they would possibly be auctioned off what we have there. A basis not on, excuse me, a basis on not showing any planned usage for the area. Except for this small cul-de-sac that will be put up at the south end of Cary Drive. For people coming off of that. You already know that people will be affected by the change, so I'll just get to my points. Yes, change and progress are necessary. Now why put a full interchange at 4100? This will and is affecting too many residences. 47 South, 35th South are totally suited for on and off without disruption to homes as much as possible. They both approach approximately one mile either side of 4100 South. 4100 will have very little change with traffic lights as 3600 West and with this, if this falls through what they have. At 3600 West and 40th West, they still have lights and will still be just as congested. And I'm sure every one of you have been there and seen that at night and in the mornings. It's pretty bad. But if we leave those halls lights up, and they'll still be there again with on off, and I'll get to that, so I'll shut up and just keep moving. Okay? Eliminating on off will eliminate lights at 41st South and Bangator. And will still provide pedestrian access, and with proper planning on 4100's traffic flow, will alleviate a lot of congestion. The distance between my garage, I live on the west side of Cary Drive, and I am east-facing on my home, is approximately 11 foot six to the existing sound wall. 10 feet of that is easement. The other 1 foot 6 is what they left over when Bangator Highway was put in. There's no quick lane deeds or anything on it. You know, we just have to take care of it, which is okay to a point. It's still noisy. If the drawing also shows this and shows homes would not have to be demolished with that way, with that sound wall. If other property is needed for coming under 4100, this appears to be enough to help the issue without loss of homes and would definitely save cost big time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, Speaker Four? Oh, yeah. How many are in support of him? I just assume you all are. Hey, Mr. Nichols?
I stopped the other day and talked to the highway patrol about the traffic on 4100 South. The next day, it was real good, and I haven't seen an officer since. 5400, that stop sign is just decorative. They don't stop for that stop sign. Whatever. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Speaker Five?
Hi, my name is Merrill Walker, and like many of the others, I am concerned with the current design and current plans of the 4100 interchange. With the use of on and off ramps, that has now required then the design for this 80 to 100 yard tunnel that is now two full blocks into a subdivision. This is an 80 yard to 100 yard tunnel that I think is going to cause tremendous safety concerns. I would never let my family go through there. I would never let my wife go through there. If you look at some of the other tunnels that are on the Jordan River Parkway, they are tagged. They have homeless people living there. If you are caught in there in some sort of altercation, you are trapped. There is absolutely no way. UDOT says they will make sure that nothing happens. It will never be tagged. We will never have homeless people there. I have very close ties with Salt Lake City Police, and in speaking with them and speaking with their gang unit, they said that is absolutely a problem. And it will be a problem in West Valley. Without those on and off ramps, that need for that tunnel is no longer needed. You can actually put, the crosswalks could go stay at 4100 South. People would not have to walk two blocks into the middle of a subdivision. So we don't want, we don't know what kind of element is going to come into our subdivision. We don't believe that you can keep that tunnel safe. And we, more than anything, I have severe questions about that design. Overpasses don't get tagged. Nobody's living on an overpass. But they will down in that tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Six. Oh, yes. How many support? Okay, thank you.
My name is Terry Draper. I want to thank you for giving our community the opportunity to have an open forum on something that is a big concern to us. My wife and I moved here 52 years ago. We raised our family here. When we moved in, my wife says, well, why do we want to live in this area? And I says, it's wide open spaces, lots of places to raise our sons. I had five daughters, so you know how my planning goes. But I am really concerned with what I'm seeing. In my working background in engineering, we had a statement. We've doubled our speed and lost all sense of direction, and I can feel that's what we might be facing here. I know that change needs to be made. Progress is a good thing. But for all of the reasons stated, we are really concerned about our community. I live next door to Stephen Nelson. I've lived here 52 years. He's lived here a year. He moved into our area for the same reason I did. What he saw, he liked. He felt like was a safe place to raise his family. It was a long-term commitment to buy a home here. I'm also a cyclist. Not since early this morning. I've cycled, but I do a lot of cycling. I go through these tunnels all the time. There's some of them, as has been stated, are not safe. There are collection points for garbage, needles, other paraphernalia, and people literally living. And they are a lot shorter than this tunnel is projected to be. And the other tunnels that I go through aren't in residential access areas. This one is unique. It's going to be a problem. It will not be controlled. It will be a place for graffiti and an unsavory environment. And that environment will be transporting through our neighborhoods. Again, I think we've doubled our speed and lost all sense of direction. There are better alternatives, and the better alternative is to make 4100 a east-west road only with pedestrian traffic, with cycling traffic next to 4100 rather than through a tunnel. Again, I appreciate the time that you've given me, and I hope that sound minds can prevail here.
Thank you. Hey, Speaker Seven? Oh, yes. How many in support? I'm just, thank you.
Mayor Lang and council members, I want to introduce myself. My name is Kirby Crowell, and I'm with the League of Women Voters for our local and county government Observer Corps. I'm sure you've heard of us at some point or another. We observe school boards in the county, local government municipalities, and commissions and districts. I wanted to introduce to you today, Mayor Lang and the council members, our Ms. Dawn Garrett, who's a longtime resident of West Valley City. And she has agreed and volunteered to review the West Valley City Council meetings in person or by Zoom and to report on us what issues of interest are to your community and to our organization. We are nonpartisan. Our organization promotes participation by all residents in all aspects of municipal government, land use, planning, housing, infrastructure, education, voting rights, diversity, and elections. And I know we have our vote, voting and meet the candidates forums in partnership with many of our local neighborhood organizations. And I want to introduce you to Ms. Garrett. She did sign up to have three minutes, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time to her. We also have a letter that we'd like to present to your Assistant Secretary Recorder for your record so that you have it on file. And if there's any questions or concerns, there's also information and a link as to where you can find out more about what the Observer Court does and doesn't do. Thank you. This is Ms. Dawn Garrett.
Hey, Speaker Seven or Eight?
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm Dawn Garrett, and I'm going to just be the observer. I did want to just briefly introduce myself. I am in Tom Hune's council or district, excuse me. So it's just nice to meet you all. I was here last week, and I look forward to working with you.
Hey, thank you so much. Speaker Ten.
My name is John Peterson. I live right between 4100 South and 4700 South, just off 36 West, very close to Bangator Highway. When we moved in here, we lived against what would become Bangator Highway. My children called it Sherwood Forest. And we have enjoyed living there. We're in our third home in that subdivision or in that area. And I wish I had prepared remarks written down like I could, so I could speak eloquently to everybody else. So I've just got some bullet points here. I use both intersections, I use all three to get off on Bangator Highway, and I I don't think it's a huge imposition at all to eliminate access onto 4100 South or onto Bangator Highway from 4100 South. Entrance ramps and exit ramps are very noisy, and we get to hear, because we live so close, the noise of the bullet bikes and the kids with their loud muffler cars. And that's just going, seems to be escalating. It appears to me that a whole lot of people would be impacted less if that interchange was just a through street instead of having access to 3500 South. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All that agree? Okay, thank you. All right, we now have Speaker Eleven.
My name is Stephen Bryan, and what I would like to say is I live on Elbun Avenue, and I would be directly impacted by this tunnel, this proposed tunnel. And I don't like it largely for the same reasons that Merrill Walker mentioned. It's going to bring a lot of bad foot traffic through the street that I live on. I remember that when I was a student at BYU, you know, a couple decades ago, there are some tunnels, I believe it was by Heritage Halls or Hilton Halls, and and there was frequent traffic going through those tunnels there. And it seems like every Friday, when you open up the newspaper and you read the police beat, you read about some person doing lewd acts or you know, exhibitionists. I don't know why, but they seem to target those areas and that, and I remember that. So when I heard about this tunnel, that was the first thing that came to mind. And I don't want those people on my street. I don't want them passing through. I don't want them in the tunnel, in the tunnel. And it concerns me. And I think it should concern you as well. Only other thing I can say is. Their words are my words. And I support them completely. Thank you.
Thank you. All in support? Hey, thank you. We have no one else that signed up? Was there anyone else that wished to speak? Hey, this gentleman here, give us your name and address and then we'll come over to this side.
Hello, my name is Richard Noack. I live on Parkway Avenue at twelve thirty two West. So I see there's lots of concerns in the audience today, so. Not that some of our political processes work, so I see a lot of concerned people and it's. Think your government, when these proposals come up, they should right away make these, all these residents know because they are concerning. Disrupting their lives. So. I'm just also here to support that and as far as our parks and recreation, they're, they're a great opportunity for the residents of our cities to. Go visit parks and visit with family and make new friends. So. As you know, I run a bird rescue, so I'm just kind of here to announce, I'm actually, we work with our state parks, so I'm going to actually be at Strawberry Reservoir this Saturday. At eleven o'clock with some birds. We're going to talk about. Nature conservation. And this is another product that our agency provides to the public and the people of Utah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Miss Wade.
Hello, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Wade. I live at three four eight nine Ashby Cove in West Valley City. I'm really excited to hear so many people expressing with particular details about the situation that they're facing as in terms of the proposal at Bangor. I see this as a really exciting opportunity for this council to advocate for the residents in that area. With UDOT because I know that UDOT has funding that is incredibly huge compared to the funding that goes to UTA. And that's been one of my observations is that there could be such a shift in culture for people using UTA. More than needing more and more expensive, expensive construction of, of highways. Particularly when there hasn't necessarily been any presentation of. Traffic studies and the potential for, you know, what the impact for the traffic studies are. What the health and human, human health risks are, including air quality, safety. And other types of risks that come with this kind of construction in a neighborhood where Bangor has been. This other, other construction has been in more commercial areas like this. But, but again, it comes back to just, I think, just such an opportunity for this council to be an advocate for the residents of West Valley City. And. The other topic that I wanted to mention, I'm watching my time here. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, so I'm really excited to see. And one of the things, see an observer here specifically from the League of Women Voters. One of the things I can tell you is that the League of Women Voters does extensive in-depth research into topics. That is, again, nonpartisan, non-political, is for the purpose of understanding the topics. And then they bring that research back to a particular unit, depending on how extensive, how, how far it goes. And for a consensus, a discussion, and then a consensus vote before they. Put the study out as presented from the League of Women Voters. So there's just this amazing, wonderful process that League, the League of Women Voters does for people in Utah. One more thing that I wanted to mention really quickly. I sent an email to all of you earlier. About a group of young writers that have been working in West Valley in a residency program for the last month. Because of the facilities and staff that our city provides to people in, 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 in this community and others. And I hope you can come to their presentation tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that didn't have the chance to sign up that wished to speak? And if you're in that corner, I can't see you. Okay, seeing none. We will turn the time to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Cottle, for any comments.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. I'll turn the time to the council for any comments. Hey.
I just want to thank all of you, those who spoke and those who came and support. It's, it's great to see this interaction with our elected officials. It's good to hear your opinions, so thank you so much. We hear you. Thank you.
Yes, it's Tricia Son.
I think as Representative Roner mentioned that. Maybe we should discuss in our next study session, a possible. Resolution for Bangor. Or for UDOT about Bangor.
Okay. Thank you.
Add to that, can we request UDOT come to one of our next study sessions and we can talk about. Different things for forty one?
Of course. Okay, thank you. Yes.
And besides the UDOT, and, and some may not know, but the city actually funded and commissioned an independent study, right? We didn't just take UDOT at their word either. So maybe if we could drum up that report and some of those findings to help. Inform this continued discussion. Because to be honest, some of the things that you shared tonight are. Different or in some ways even in contrast to earlier comments that we've heard from residents in the area. And as the plans have changed, obviously. It's something that we should probably take a new look at, so. I support my colleagues in that, yes.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to know is that we are here to serve the community, so we are grateful. You guys are here tonight to voice your concern. And we'll work with the UDOT, we'll work at that one, try to make it happen for you guys.
Hey, thank you. And I agree with all that was said with the council, so we will discuss this in study session. On July eleventh is our next study session agenda, and I'm pretty sure it'll fit on there, so just watch. If it, if we already have too much stuff piled up, it may not make it. Do you know what the schedule is on the eleventh?
I don't. We certainly would have time. My only limiting factor, of course, would be UDOT's schedule. So not knowing their availability, but certainly would. Desiring to have them there. I'm guessing they'd do their best to be there, but not having that verification, I'd hate to set that in stone. But I think from a timing perspective, we would be fine that night to add this to the agenda. So we'll give it, we'll give it our best shot for July eleventh. And I would just make note that all of those agendas are always posted on our website, so you can keep close track of what is and isn't happening with regards to that right on the West Valley City website.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and even if UDOT can't come that night, if we could just discuss with staff their recommendations with the. Views of the residents in mind.
Sure, you bet. We'll just put it on there for the eleventh and we'll, we'll hope for UDOT. Without UDOT, we'll do it with staff.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you so much for coming out tonight. We're not offended if you leave. But we will continue on. So we now have our. Application GP one twenty twenty three, and I'll turn the time over to Ms. Cottle to explain that one.
Thank you, ma'am. This is an application being brought by Mr. Russell Platt at twelve fifty one West, thirty three hundred South. The property is thirteen acres and this particular application is for a general plan change. That would go from mixed use with high density residential to mixed youth use with very high density residential. As the council is aware, this property is already developed. It's developed under the name Village at Rivers Edge. It currently includes two hundred and forty four apartments. And property that is a forty unit condo building that's not included in this application. So the current density is eighteen point one. The applicant is proposing two changes to the, to the development, which are highlighted on the concept plan that you've reviewed as a council prior to this night. The first change. Is to remodel the buildings A one through A four, which are the, the bottom buildings of the main building that faces the street. Those are currently. Or have been historically used as some commercial, small commercial mixed use. So the first proposal is to remodel those to replace the existing commercial with thirty apartment units. The second change is to fill in the wetland area along the east side of the property and develop an additional seventeen rental town home units. Within four new buildings. Because of that change in density that's proposed, the request for the general plan change is necessary. And again, that would go from eighteen point eight to twenty two point four units per acre should the council. Desire to support the application. And I can answer any questions or we've got Steve Pastrick here and he can answer as well, ma'am.
Okay, any questions before we open the public hearing portion? Okay. Thank you. We will now open the public hearing portion. And the action item is ordinance twenty three dash twenty one. Anyone wish to speak? So name and address.
Noack again. Because of the agency run or AV and Sanctuary and Protection, so wetlands are really important to the environment. So I would. And I hope that there'll be a little more discussion about disrupting a natural occurring wetland and putting housing on it. Because, you know, these types of wetlands and certain types of birds and other types of animals actually also help with things like insect control and overgrowth and. So I'd like to see a little consideration of potentially. Keeping out maybe build a walkway around it and have it like a, a park or a feature within that subdivision rather than just build houses over it.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Hey, name and address, please, when you get up here.
Good evening. Joe Colosmo, one one seven four five South Taiton Rose Lane, Draper, Utah. I'm the owner of the apartment complex. We are coming upon our twenty five year anniversary of being in your city. When we first planned this, we committed to be long-term owners and we plan to continue to be long-term owners. Coming upon this anniversary, we feel like the project needs some love. We need to paint the buildings, fix some landscaping. It was always our intent to make this wetland area an asset. And we just have struggled. The core just doesn't let you do much with it. We can't put aeration in it. It, it's really not actively filled with water. It's, I think it's just ground, exposed groundwater that sits there. And we can't introduce water to it. There's not water that runs through it to flush it. I, I think if you were to step in it, you'd probably sink and. And it'd be problematic. So we do have an application in front of the core. The core is going to allow us to take half acre of it. To replace in a wetland bank where there's more wetland area. We, we are unfortunately going to have to keep a half acre of it. And they, they've agreed that we can clean up the fragmites and do some things to try to make it better. We've had a homeless problem with people coming and camping in the wetlands and in our property. I want to commend the city on your no camping policy because you get them out early in the morning, get them up and going and get them up and moving. We feel like if we can build a presence along that twelve fifty west, it's going to deter them from infiltrating our project. And either keep them moving down thirty five hundred or turn and make them head back east. And so we fill with that physical barrier there. And the addition of some brand new units will help keep that contingency out. We've had trouble with the commercial component. We just haven't gotten good tenants. Unfortunately, we had a market in there that had a Ponzi scheme going. They were, they were taking food stamps and they were trading them for cash. But they were taking a spiff off the cash. And so we bought their lease out and we've asked them to move on and they have. And I think our, our police report. Our police calls have dropped since that's happened. And so we'd like to take and convert that commercial to. Residential units, something that we know works there and that we can police and control. And so that's kind of our intent. It's kind of our twenty five year anniversary to. Revitalize and, and own it for another twenty five years. So that's our intent. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Hey, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. And I will turn it to the council. We'll begin with ordinance. Twenty three dash twenty one. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Just a comment, Mayor. I did mention during study meeting that I had concerns, concerns with removal of the wetlands. I mean. We just, it's not a city park, but we had a. Proclamation today about open space and I. I know we need more housing units, but I had concerns just removing the. I drove by it the other day. It didn't look that bad. I thought it looked nice and it looked like it was a full retention bond. And maybe that's just due to the current runoff situation, but it did look nice. I'm hopeful. I, it sounds like it's not going to be completely removed, so that's. Good. That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. And then I'll go to Mr. Hune.
I've driven by there too, and I have kind of the opposite feel from Council Wetstone. It is across the street is. A lot of open space and then we have the park, Jordan River Parkway all along there, so the wetlands isn't an issue for me. So. I don't love high, what is it, very high density that we're changing? I don't love very high density, but. The wetlands isn't an issue for me, so.
Hey, yes, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is the thirty five or so, thirteen hundred west right there at the entrance of our city. From east to west, and I think it's right there at the mix you is that. It does not work right now and it didn't work in the past. It's struggling. I can see that. I've been there multiple times, drove by that, the street. In fact, they have the guy fix the cell phone there, so I came there multiple times too. Wetland, I think, is a problem for the homeless people there too. I think it's a good time for them to do. Like face slip or try to do something new there. I think there's a proposal, their proposal is great for our city.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty three dash twenty one.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Fifty Simoneau.
Hi.
Councilman Wetstone.
No.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. Hey, we will now, I will turn resolution twenty three dash eighty three to the council. It is the development agreement that is attached to this rezone.
A motion to approve resolution twenty three dash eighty three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Wetstone.
No.
Councilman Fifty Simoneau.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to our resolutions. We have resolution twenty three dash eighty six. Ms. Cottle.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. This is a resolution authorizing the purchase of maintenance equipment for both Stonebridge and the Ridge Golf Club. As the council has studied this over time and hopefully was able to see the information provided through the week via. Email with regards to council member Wetstone's questions. These pieces are portion of other pieces that will be purchased as well. Most of these pieces have five to seven year lives and are replacing ten year light, ten year old. Pieces of equipment that, that have been pieced together. As you see here, the, the list. Relates to the care and maintenance of the golf courses and is divided between the two. Happy to answer any other additional questions the council might have.
So you're saying that we have seven year old equipment. Sit. Equipment that's supposed to last seven years and we've been using it for ten.
Yes, sir.
So that to me sounds like a management issue, not. And a budget issue. You know, we need to, we need to do better at that. Rather than using our. Our savings that we just. Have our big kitty of five million dollars. On something that we should have handled over the past. At least three or four. Am I, am I understanding that right?
And yep, and as Councilman Wetstone brought that up last week as well, we talked about the idea that the. Putting into the system. Rather than relying on the CIP for that in chunks, putting into the system annually a budget for each of those and, and putting that in. As it works through its useful life will stagger the purchases. As the council's aware, we just simply have not had the budget to be able to do that in the past. So. We're working through that and we hear the council and have taken that direction and passed it on to the staff for the next budget round.
Thank you.
Yes. A comment before I make a motion. I think our staff has. I think our staff has done well to keep the equipment running as long as they have. Until I sold it to my grandson, I have a, an antique car. There's one place in the country where I can order seven-inch windshield wipers. And there's one place in the county where I can get it worked on. And when those two dry up, it sits. And so I think our staff has done an amazing job keeping everything together and keeping the golf courses in the condition they are, and I would move for approval of Resolution twenty-three dash eighty-six.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Pittis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
No.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. We will now turn to our new business, which is to can, to consider application S twelve twenty twenty-two. And I'll turn it to Ms. Cottle.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This is a final plat approval at sixty-seven eighty west and SR two oh one, which is our north frontage road. The owner is requesting final subdivision approval for what's called the Moody's subdivision. Property is currently zoned manufacturing occupied by a company called Seal Master, which does pavement projects. The subdivision will consist of nine lots on approximately ten acres. And the existing business will remain part of the subdivision and will exist on what would become Lot One. As the council is aware, these types of actions are administrative and this application does meet the requirements of our code.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn it to the council, I just want to make one comment. The architect did reach out today and let me know that I had a concern last week in study session about the quality of the road. And they did assure me that the road was designed as a public road. It's going to be a private road, but it is going to be built to the standards of a public road. So it'll be able to take the big equipment and it already adheres to all the fire department wanted from when they went through the review. So just want to make sure we all have the same information, so I will now turn application S twelve twenty twenty-two to the council for discussion or a motion.
Would move for approval of application S twelve twenty-two.
A second, yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Pittis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now turn to our consent agenda, which is all pretty routine, so I won't go through all of it. We have fifteen different resolutions that are warranty deeds, reappointments, new appointments to different boards that we have. And I will turn this to the council to either go through one at a time or all at once.
Quick question first, and I'm not opposed to any, I'm very supportive of all of these reappointments, but for the boards and commissions that we have, do we have term limits?
We do, and Nicole Kamac could run through those. Some of them, some of them vary, so not every board is the same. But if you had specific questions, I know Nicole has, Kamac has those right on her fingertips. If you have questions about a specific board.
And I don't. I just wanted to, you know, just to make sure that there were opportunities for new folks to pop on and off and
Yeah, great question. Yes, sir.
Perfect.
I would move to approve fifteen items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Pittis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session tonight. We will have a special redevelopment agency meeting following this meeting. You're more than welcome to stay or we don't get offended if you leave. And then next week is the Fourth of July, so we will not have any meetings. We'll be observing the holiday. So we just have one more action item.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.
Call to order our redevelopment agency tonight and it Tuesday twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, it's seven twenty-two PM tonight, and we are here at the council, we are at the city council chamber right here, thirty-six hundred Constitution Boulevard and West Valley City, Utah. Opening ceremony, we have a council member at the Western, he had that earlier tonight. And we have approved minutes, it's the June sixth and twenty twenty-three. We'll turn over to the council.
Move to approve those minutes.
Like a second.
So we have, go ahead. So we have a motion, we have a second, so all favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
So we pass it. Okay, resolution here twenty-three dash zero four, I would turn over to Nico Carter for the Assistant City Manager.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a Resolution twenty-three zero four is a resolution to reauthorize the redevelopment agency to participate in what's called our hometown scholarship, hometown scholars program. As the council will recall, this program is headed into its seventh year. It utilizes housing set aside monies that are required by state law and by that facilitates one of the strategic goals that the council has held out for the economic development group for some time now with regards to the improvement of the secondary and post-secondary education of the students of West Valley. And this scholarship program is in partnership with the University of Utah. They facilitate a really lovely capability for us to provide scholarships this year over, well over twenty. And as you know, historically, we've seen a really wild success. They have a above ninety percent graduation rate with regards to the students in the Opportunity Scholar Program at the Business School at University of Utah, which is unheard of in post-secondary education. Typically, you're in the fifties and sixties. So our students get into this program and they graduate with degrees and they agree to stay here in our city and, and many of them find work here through programs where they intern with businesses that already exist in our city and/or find positions after that they're, they're placed in by the, with help of the U and from their own good efforts. So this program allows for that to continue another year.
Thank you. I would turn it over to the, the city council for motion or action.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero four. I think this is a wonderful program that we continue to do in our city.
Second.
Great, thank you. Have a motion, have a second. We'll turn over to a city recorder, Nico Kamac. Please.
Mr. Pittis Manu?
Aye.
Mr. Whitstone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
Chairman Hune?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, see all favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we are adjourned. Thank you.